Tuesday, June 14. I will say that again so that it's recorded. I would like to call the Tuesday, June 14, 2022 Planning Board Meeting to order, please. Could there be a rule call?
Bob Doherty.
Yeah.
Kevin Donovan.
Yeah.
Dave Edmonds.
Yeah.
Carolyn Turner.
Yeah.
Mike Ventreska.
Yeah.
Chair Claudia Bogan.
Here. All right, first on the agenda, under public hearings, there is a public hearing, special permit site plan review application to authorize light manufacturing use of approximately 33,514 square feet within a new two-story building containing approximately 133,738 square feet of net floor area at 216 New Boston Street. The petitioner is CF New Boston Property Company LLC.
Tina, Tim Williams from Allen and Major Associates, is there a chance I might be able to share our screen? We have a PowerPoint presentation.
Perfect. You should have it now.
Thank you.
Attorney Reynolds, are you in the audience? Very good, I see you.
Yes, I am. Sorry, I've been a funeral today, so I'm a little bit, my internet's a little off, I'm in a different location. But I am here and happy to start off with that, it's helpful.
Please, we're ready for you.
All right, great. So for the record, Anne Reynolds of Ruben and Ruben, and as you know, I'm here with Sean Sullivan, Matt DiMarco, and John Sullivan of Cabot, Cabot and Forbes, Tim Williams of Allen and Major, Scott Thornton of Vaness and Associates, and Walker Shanklin of SGA. As you know, the petition, excuse me, the petitioner is seeking special permits pursuant to Section 5.130B, Section 5.141A, Section 5.153, and Section 8.3.1, and Site Plan Review pursuant to Section 12.2.4 to allow for a two-story building containing approximately 133,738 square feet of net floor area with the following uses, and I should preface this as 216 New Boston Street that I'm referring to at the moment. And the uses are light manufacturing, which is approximately 33,514 square feet, which is the Planning Board Special Permit, and then an office use of 39,229 square feet, which is the City Council Special Permit, lab use approximately 58,845 square feet, which is the City Council. A Chesapeake Hazard Use, and that's also City Council Special Permit, and then the parking of 92 vehicles on an adjacent lot located at 225 Merrimack Street, which again is also a City Council Special Permit. With respect to 225 Merrimack Street, the petitioner is seeking a special permit from the City Council pursuant to Section 5.130B, Section 5.141A, and Site Plan Review pursuant to Section 12.2.4 to allow for a four-story building containing approximately 174,812 square feet of net floor area with the following uses: office, approximately 67,056 square feet, labs, which is approximately 100,584 square feet, and then in addition, the petitioner is proposing to construct a parking garage to accommodate approximately 451. Both properties are located in the IP zoning district, which requires a special permit from the Planning Board for light manufacturing use over 15,000 square feet, and then special permits from the City Council for office in excess of 15,000 square feet, lab use in excess of 25,000 square feet in new construction, and a parking lot, excuse me, parking on a lot within 500 feet from the proposed use. On June 7th last week, 2022, a public hearing was held before the City Council on both petitions. At that hearing, the City Council voted to authorize the city solicitor and the city engineer to proceed for with peer review contracts for traffic, stormwater, and water sewer systems. And there were general comments by the council members that they liked the project but reserved judgment until the peer review process was completed. The public hearing was continued to July 12, 2022. On May 31, 2022, we also met with the following department heads: Tom Quinn, Building Commissioner, Tina Cassidy, Director, Jay Corey, City Engineer, Lenny Burnon, the Assistant DPW Superintendent, Fire Chief Clark Ketten, Ray Lieutenant George Poole, and Police Chief Robert Ruffo to review the project and discuss their comments. And then on Thursday, June 2nd, Planning Department staff issued a comment letter, which set forth comments from the department heads, which were in the process of review.
Attorney Reynolds, excuse me, could I ask everybody who's not speaking at the moment to maybe mute themselves? I'm hearing a lot of paper shuffle, so it's a little hard to hear what's being said. Thanks, I'm sorry.
No problem. Which were, so we're reviewing those comments and we'll prepare a response, which those were minimal. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to the project team to present the plans, etc. And I will start by introducing Sean Sullivan of Cabot, Cabot and Forbes to discuss their vision for the properties, and then introduce, following Tim Williams of Allen and Major, who will review the site plan, followed by Walker Shanklin of SGA Architects, and then followed by Scott Thornton of Vaness Associates to review the chat, excuse me, Traffic Impact Assessment. So I will turn it over to Sean and let him present the plans for the vision.
Thank you, Anne. Thanks, everyone. Sean Sullivan with Cabot, Cabot and Forbes here on behalf of the applicant. We just wanted to say, you know, we're really excited about this project. We think it will be a great addition and improvement to the area. You know, with the New Boston Street Bridge going in, I think it adds a lot to this area and connects over to some of the other life science buildings in Woburn and adds to that, you know, growing community. We also, you know, have experience with the Superfund site here that's controlled by the EPA, so we know what it takes to get the process started and approve with the EPA. And, you know, we're looking forward to hearing your comments on our project, so we'll hand it over to Tim to go over the civil.
Thanks, Sean. Good evening, members of the Planning Board. For the record, Tim Williams of Allen and Major Associates. And I'll give you a brief overview of the site itself. If you're not familiar, 216 New Boston and 225 Merrimack Street. What we're doing is we're calling 216 New Boston Lot 1 and 225 Merrimack Lot 2. And the proposed buildings follow the same designation, Building 1 and Building 2. Lot 1 right now consists of a roughly 12.7 acre parcel along New Boston Street. Right now, it's currently occupied by, I believe, it's Landscape Express. Lot 2, 225 Merrimack Street is, it's, right now, it's a manufacturing warehouse as well as the other building on Lot 1, manufacturing warehouse. So there's two uses on Lot 1, and essentially one block, one use on Lot 2. Right now, Lot 1 and Lot 2 are not conforming with the current zoning ordinance. We will bring these sites into conformance with zoning, and I'll get into that in a little bit. So right now, we have several site constraints associated with the, with the project site, and that includes, there's a Boston Edison easement that runs down this property line to the north. It's 150 feet wide, 75 of it is on, on our Lot 1 parcel, and it runs kind of right along this tree line. As well, there's a number of well and resource areas associated with the project, and we will have to file a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. But right now, there's an intermittent stream that runs between Landscape Express and the existing manufacturing building, runs down, gets caught in a closed drainage system in the New Boston Street. There's also another intermittent stream that runs down along New Boston Street and gets caught in the same drainage system. And for point of reference, we did file an ANRAD with the Conservation Commission and received an ORAD. So those well and resources are locked in. The back of the site, adjacent to the landfill, is bordering vegetated wetlands, and it runs essentially along the whole back, adjacent to the Paper Street, Newburgh, and the Paper Street, Rumford. As well, there's a pocket out in front of the site along New Boston Street. And that's a well and resource area. To access Lot 1, there's two existing curb cuts, one in this location where my hand is, there's another one in this location. There's also a curb cut here to service the manufacturing facility, second curb cut, third curb cut, and then one giant curb cut for Lot 2. So there's six curb cuts right now along New Boston Street and Merrimack Street to service these two site uses. Again, another aerial view of the existing conditions, this is taken from the landfill, this picture here. Landscape Express, they have their recycled material drop-off, their mulch production and their, their chemical dye operations on the facility. Moving down through this lower picture, 216 has the large steel warehouse building with office space, and 225 Merrimack Street is the same type of building, it's just a little bit smaller. This is the proposed condition. What we're essentially going to do is re-subdivide this parcel, and you should be expecting an A&R shortly across your desk to, again, re-subdivide these parcels. Lot 1 is going to be now 6.41 acres, and Lot 2 will become 8.36 acres. Now, on Lot 1, Building 1 will essentially be 134,000 square foot building with associated parking. Based on the proposed site uses, we're required to have 343 spaces. And as Anne had mentioned, 92 of those spaces that are, that are proposed are going to be on Lot 2. And that's a lot per your zoning ordinance. So this site will conform with zoning as far as your parking requirements go. Lot 2, 195,000 square foot building in Building 2. And based on those, the proposed site uses, we're required to have 444 parking spaces. What we've done was we were able to get 104 surface parking spots, and in the park, in the structured parking, we'll have 337 parking spots. So we've provided 451, which allows for six additional parking spots on Lot 2, with, again, Lot 1 conforming to zoning, and Lot 2 having six extra parking spots. What we've done too is we've interconnected both buildings with pedestrian walkways. And we've put a new sidewalk out on Merrimack Street, wrapping around New Boston Street, and tying in to the terminus of the sidewalk that's going to be constructed as part of the New Boston Street Bridge. So similar to what we did over on Zero New Boston, we considered the bridge being in place, in the built condition. You can actually see it kind of ghosted in back here. This is the CAD file from, oops, that's the CAD file from the engineering department. Our curb cuts will be significantly reduced from the six I presented before down to three. So there'll be one entering Lot 1, access in Building 1. There'll be a shared driveway between the two parcels, and again, based on who the end users are, it may be one end user, but if they're two separate end users, we will have to create an access easement between the two. And then we've consolidated all the curb cuts on Merrimack Street down to one dedicated curb cut. And again, enhance that whole corridor. As you saw on the, the opening slide, there's going to be ample landscaping incorporated into the project. As well, we're actually creating almost two acres of green space on this parcel, on the joint parcels over what's out there today. And the big thing is we're, we're actually bringing both of these parcels into conformance with zoning, which does not exist at this point. So as far as the stormwater goes, now again, as I mentioned, we are, well, one, we're subject to peer review, but also we're going to be subject to a notice of intent with the Woburn Conservation Commission. And what we've done was we've put together this, a pretty robust stormwater management plan. There's not a lot of relief across this site, there's only about a four, four-foot elevation break. So we've kind of contained all the stormwater internal. And what we've done was, I mentioned that intermittent stream that currently runs down between these, well, between Landscape Express and the building use at 216. That intermittent stream is going to be relocated, and based on the ANRAD process we were going through, we brought this approach up to the Conservation Commission, and they seem to be receptive toward it. So this intermittent stream is going to get relocated to the northern portion of the site, which is essentially going to marry these two well and resources together. Our stormwater will be handled in your typical closed drainage system, catch basins, to manholes, to water quality treatment devices. But because there's not a lot of relief, we've designed these to have gravel wetlands. So there's a gravel wetland and a series of gravel wetlands behind Building 1, adjacent to the intermittent stream. And then over on Lot 2, the parking garage will dump into a gravel wetland as well. One of the things that we considered is reusing the existing stubs that are currently serviced in the site. Right now, the existing sites have very minimal closed drainage system, but they do have pipes that run into the site. So we're going to avoid opening up New Boston Street with the drainage system, because essentially we're going to be tying in the closed drainage system to those existing pipes that exist on-site today. Another point to note is along New Boston Street, where I indicated that we had those multiple curb cuts and the intermittent stream, we're going to close the curb cuts off, and we're going to daylight the stream again, and bring it back to its previous natural condition. And our new, our, our curb cuts will have three-sided box culverts. So it's in conformance with the DEP standards and the City of Woburn Conservation Commission regulations. So we're pretty confident, and we're actually pleased about how this drainage design came out. As far as the site utilities go, it's very similar. We'll be bringing in sewer, water, gas, electrical, telecommunications, all underground. We will be utilizing the existing stubs that are out there, so we'll be tying our sewer service into the existing sewer stub that services the sites. Our water services, we're going to tie into the existing water services. We will have to relocate a couple utility poles, but we will bring new service underground, both electrical and telecommunications to services building. And the only reason we're going to need to open up New Boston Street is to connect a new gas service out to the site. So minimal intrusive into the New Boston Street, and hopefully similar to Zero New Boston, which was done by the same developer, we'll be able to work in harmony with Woburn Engineering Department and Mass DOT and their consultants on construction phasing and how all these projects get married together. So with that, I'll turn it over to, I think, Walker is up next.
I'm here. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for having us again. Happy to be here. I'm Walker Shanklin, Director of Architecture for SGA. We're an architectural firm based in Boston and New York. So we're just going to quickly talk through a little bit of the floor plan, some of the design approach for both buildings. Before we get started here, I do think this is a great site. It's a little bit unique in that you can have both your, you can sort of have a whole lifecycle for life science. So you have both office and lab in Building 2, and then Building 1 provides a flexibility for GMP or pharmaceutical manufacturer to come in and actually produce the chemicals coming out of Building 2. So it's a really interesting site for us, for sure. Looking here at Building 1, as far as the exterior facade and architecture is concerned, we wanted to provide something that was simple, elegant, flexible. We're creating these series of frames that follow the structural base on the interior of the building with several dedicated tenant and main lobby entrance, entrances accented with warm wood-like material. Next slide, please. Looking at the floor plan here, so Building 1 is, has a 40-foot floor-to-roof height. We are planning for mezzanine space in there up to 20 feet. You can see sort of the general design logic of a GMP or good manufacturing product type tenant here, where you have centralized lobby, anterooms for changing into gowns, that kind of stuff. And then you go into the, the main manufacturing space, which could have clean rooms and other type of storage materials. And then we've located the loading dock along the backside. You'll also see some of those tenant entries located on the corners. Next slide, please. And here, again, we're identifying the mezzanine space for Building 1. Excellent. Here, again, you can see that kind of reference to the simple frames, the black frames with the infilled openings here. And we're going to carry that language over into Building 2 as well, so they feel like they're talking to each other, but not necessarily copies of each other. Next slide. Here you have Building 2, which again is a life science and office-type use. We typically look for a 60-40 split between life science lab use, BSL 2 or similar, and office use. Here, we've taken those kind of framed boxes and elevated them up, so you can, it's a four-story building, but we're breaking that mass down, so it feels like two stories or two elements. And again, showing that warm wood accent for the entry, so you have a really good sense of where to go when you visit, visit the building. Next slide, please. A few things to note here, we do have a dedicated back of house loading dock along Plan South here. We're also showing a through lobby, so that from either side of the building, wherever you park, you can connect into the central elevators and corridors and go up into the building. Next slide. One thing to note here, we are proposing to provide an elevated bridge to connect to the parking garage. We're looking, our first floor for, for Building 2 is about 20 feet. So we're going to have around, we're shooting for a 16-foot clear height underneath that bridge to allow for any kind of vehicular access or emergency fire trucks, that kind of thing. Excellent. Again, here you have a typical floor plan layout, very simple grids, 33 feet is what lab benches like to fit into. Next slide. And here up on the roof, we're proposing a enclosed mechanical penthouse for lots of sensitive equipment, and then exterior mechanical areas on either side for your main things like air handlers, cooling towers, etc. You typically have anywhere from 20 to 25 feet of mechanical screen to hide those large objects. Excellent. And here you have the elevations showing those two elevated bars. Excellent. And some pretty simple parking garage layouts with 300, I believe it's 377, 337 spaces. And some elevations, we're typically going to look at this as a precast concrete. Excellent. Great. And that, with that, I'll turn it over to Scott Thornton with Traffic Analysis. Thank you.
Thank you, Walker. For the record, Madam Chair, members of the board, Scott Thornton with Vaness and Associates, we prepared the traffic assessment for the project, and I just have a few slides to sort of summarize what we found in the analysis for the project, and then I'll turn it back over to Attorney Reynolds to give closing remarks. So this slide shows the study area, eight intersections that we reviewed to identify the impact of the project, ranging from School Street with Main Street to the west, to Ryan Road with Industrial Parkway, up along New Boston Street, going into Commerce Way and Presidential, Presidential Way up into Wilmington. There, we also looked at the, the driveways, as Tim mentioned, there's six driveways serving the site. We looked at traffic impact or traffic generated by the existing uses on-site. This is, this is actually the third project that we've looked at on New Boston Street, and we have traffic counts from, from January of 2020 that we used for these locations, so that those traffic volumes did not require any COVID adjustments, because they were really occurred prior to the emergence of the, of the COVID-19 pandemic. And then, as I mentioned, we did counts of the existing site, which generates a fair amount of traffic between all the uses on, on the two lots. The next slide shows the trip generation for the project. With the, with the proposed site, there's a number of uses, as been mentioned, the manufacturing, the office and the lab space. And so we estimated those trips using ITE Trip Generation Manual. We also mentioned, or included the, the existing site traffic, and since obviously the, those uses would be removed as a consequence of the project, we netted the, the existing traffic out. Gives us a net increase of about 205 trips during the morning peak hour and 246 trips during the evening peak hour. We spread that traffic out throughout the study area and found that in general, we had traffic increases of anywhere between 0.4 and 5.4% on a peak hour basis, with the smaller numbers, 0.4 to 0.5% on Commerce Way with the heavier traffic volume, and the larger increases down along the Ryan Road and Industrial Parkway area. So we distributed that traffic, as I mentioned, out to the study area, did the level service analysis. Really didn't find significant impacts in terms of delays primarily because of the, the fact that the site presently generates a fair amount of traffic. So with that net increase, it, it mutes the, the effect of the additional traffic. So we decide, we're planning to focus our mitigation efforts on TDM strategies. And, and actually, if we could go to the next slide, it shows a, the, the different focuses that, that we expect to have. So we're looking at TDM measures, including onsite transportation coordinator, posting schedules for the Anderson Center, and also likely to be a member of the Junction Transportation Management Association, which is, which is now serving the City of Woburn. Looking at focusing on carbon footprint reduction with covered bike parking vehicle charging stations and promoting the area bike paths and pedestrian facilities. And we, as, as has been mentioned, we are going to be undergoing peer review. We're looking forward to working with Jay Corey and the city and peer review consultants to identify the appropriate mitigation for the project. So that's all I have for traffic. I'll turn it over to Anne Reynolds. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And I, I will then turn it back to the board to ask any questions they might have, but I'm just going to give sort of a brief, few bullet points just on the benefits generally of this proposal. It, you know, has the opportunity to create high-paying jobs, it will accommodate the growing need for production of therapeutic medicines. It eliminates the current degraded condition and natural conditions of the property, which was previously noted presently contains two large 1960-style industrial buildings, totaling about 82,294 square feet, plus Landscape Express location containing significant mulch piles and construction debris and approximately 5.4 acres. As explained in the fiscal impact assessment filed with the petition, the project will result in the net annual positive physical impact, sorry, fiscal impact of $1,668,000, $100,000 with gross local revenues estimated at $1,733,046 per year, less the City of Woburn costs at approximately $65,000 per year. This positive fiscal impact does not include the intangible fiscal impacts of the increased local and regional activity as a result of the project. It also doesn't include the one-time payments required in connection with the project, such as the projected $1.5 million in building permit fees, and I and I estimated to total about $86,000. So I will, if the board has any questions of anybody or any questions regarding the project, we are happy to answer.
All right, Attorney Reynolds, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, but before I invite members of the public to speak, I would like to throw it open to the board members. If any board member has any questions for Attorney Reynolds or any of the presenters today, if you could give me a verbal cue, since I can't see all of you correct right now. Yeah, please go right ahead.
My questions are for the traffic consultant. We keep that slide up there, that'd be probably the most helpful. The drawing depicting the, the elevation here, I think, is probably better. We'll get to that next one. My question is, right now, you're putting a 337 car parking garage on the back of the property, servicing both sites, which is allowed, but it exits onto New Boston Street, approximately 200 feet or so up from the corner. And where are your vehicles going to be turning to primarily and heading towards?
Do you mean in, in terms of distribution to? Do you mean in, in terms of distribution to outside of the study area?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, so we base the trip distribution on census data, which indicates that most of the employees in this area of Woburn are commuting to this area from the south and the west. So we have somewhere around sixty five percent of the traffic coming from the south and the rest of it coming from the north.
How are you able to determine where they come from?
So the census, there's census data that surveys where, where people live and where they work. And that data is available. It's, it's published by the US government.
Okay. So on your traffic study, where is the traffic going coming out of that driveway when it hits Merrimack Street?
When it hits Merrimack Street, there's some percentage of it that's headed down along Merrimack, which turns into School Street and then comes out to Main Street. And there's, there's another portion of it that's, that's headed back up to New Boston Street to continue back out to, to Mishawam.
What are those percentages going, one going to the west towards Maine and the other one going to the southeast towards New Boston? And how much will be going to the, to the north towards New Boston, towards Wilmington?
Yeah. So, so we have, so we have about ten percent that's headed to the north on New Boston Street into Wilmington. And then we've got about twenty percent that's headed to the north by way of Presidential Way and out to Commerce Way and headed up to the, to ninety three through that way. In terms of what's headed to the south, the traffic, there's about twenty percent that's headed onto, onto Main Street south and about fifteen percent onto Ryan Road and about thirty percent onto Industrial Parkway into Mishawam. And it's, so it's a combination of, of the census data that indicates where people, where people are commuting to Woburn from and where their residences are. And we, we tailor that or, or adjust it with the traffic volumes that we observed.
Okay. So I don't, maybe I missed some. I don't think those numbers added up to a hundred percent, but I thought you had twenty percent head north through Wilmington, ten going to Presidential Way with the split up there. The other, are you going to carry on up to one twenty nine or are you going to take a left onto Eames Street at Woburn, which doesn't see it seem to have a traffic study? And I believe you're going to need one at Ames and Maine in Wilmington.
Yeah. So I, I think I did miss five percent headed down Commerce Way. But yeah, I, I, we had, we had initial discussions with, with Jay Corey on the scope for this project. It's the same, it's the same basic study area that we've used for other projects on New Boston Street. And the benefit of having the, of having the data from twenty twenty, from, from pre pandemic conditions is that it doesn't, it, it's more accurate. It's a more conservative condition. Because, you know, those traffic volumes, what if we were to collect the traffic volumes and, and we do this all the time now, if we don't have old data or pre pandemic data, we, we do collect the traffic counts and adjust those volumes based on, on pre, pre pandemic conditions. But in this case, we already have that data. So we adjusted it up for growth and, and this, and so it's a pretty conservative analysis in that regard.
So you're telling me you think when you go over the new, new, New Boston Bridge into Wilmington, you hit Eames Street at Woburn? You're not going to increase traffic going left or right? With the twenty percent vehicles, four hundred, what's that?
So it was, right. So it was, so it was ten percent.
Doesn't seem like it's a very thorough assessment of the area. But I am quite familiar with the area and the traffic patterns prior to the bridge going down and now.
Yeah.
And it just seems like it's, it's not thorough. And the key intersections are not being addressed. But when you pull out of the driveway, taking a right going down School Street is one thing, you'll be fine there. Taking a left out of there, you're going to queue up on Merrimack to take a left to go on New Boston towards Wilmington, or you'll be able to bear right. Why isn't the driveway on New Boston Street that is neutral to both properties being utilized more effectively to disperse traffic?
Well, I think it is being used effectively. We've got, we've got three driveways that traffic is being distributed between the, the three driveways based on the proximity of the parking spaces to those driveways. So I think that is, that is being, being an effective distribution technique of traffic volume. As far as traffic going north on, on New Boston Street into Woburn Street of Wilmington, it, it's a tent, we're expecting a ten percent amount of traffic headed up that way. We expect the, as I mentioned, we expect the other twenty percent to head onto Presidential Way and come back to, to the ramps that for, for Commerce Way at, at that location. You know, I, I think that there's there. It's an, it's an extensive study area. As I mentioned, and I think has been mentioned before, we're, we're expecting to undergo peer review of this, of this project and we'll work with the peer review consultant if, if they have any issues on the, on the size of the study area and the way the traffic was calculated and the way the analysis was conducted.
Well, as you look at this overall site plan that you have on the screen, when you come out of the parking garage, you take a left and you queue up on Merrimack Street. You want to take a left to head towards Wilmington with that total of thirty percent, twenty going to Presidential and ten going up to Wilmington. Look at your line of sight in that corner. Okay. And you're also going to be fighting people exiting your own property, taking a right to go down New Boston and opposing them.
I, I think what you find is that a lot of that traffic gets, you know, kind of finds its own way internally in the site, traffic that wants to turn, turn left is likely going to turn left out of the, out of these, out of these driveways that are further to the, further to the north. If they're intended, I, I would expect that the, a lot of that traffic would, would want to, the traffic that's headed up into Wilmington would, would want to turn left out of New Boss or, or out of the New Boston Street driveways. You know, we also accounted for an, an eventual traffic signal at the intersection of Merrimack Street and New Boston Street. Because the, the part of the mitigation for the New Boston Street Bridge project is installation of a traffic signal at that intersection. So that, that is incorporated into the analysis. That does make a difference in, in, in getting traffic out of, through those, through those streets. So I think that's, that's a benefit that's, that's likely to occur.
Thank you.
All right, Jim, are you all set?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other board member with any questions? If you could give me a verbal cue?
All right, it's David.
David, please go right ahead.
All right. Just first a comment. I, I like the idea of the relocation of the stream. If you go to the newly constructed Minuteman High School in Lexington, you'll see they did exactly that. And it sounds a little daunting at first to, to change the direction of water and, and make sure that it works. But they, 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 the reason I'm bringing this up is because sometimes you go, I don't know about that, but they, they, there was a stream, it was at the Mitten and it's been there since forever. And they were able to work it and it came out very nicely and it became part of the water mitigation process. So it's, that's useful. The only question I have is you talked about that Merrimack Street driveway exit being, you didn't say this word, but I'll say it humongous. And I'd just like to remind everybody that we had a discussion sometime in the past about how wide these driveways can be. There is an absolute limit. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, Tina, to the chair, but there's an absolute limit on how big you can make them. And I, I just want to make sure we don't have, that doesn't creep up on your, at some later date with somebody saying it's too big, too wide, too whatever. So that's just what I have to add.
All right, Dave, are you set?
I'm all set.
All right. Is there any other board member with any other questions or comments? Please give me.
Yes, Madam Chair. This is Mike Gantreska.
Hey, Mike, go right ahead.
Yeah, um, I think Jim, Jim brought up some good points about the traffic and, you know, if I, I think in matter to this project, i- i- it's good, but you know, obviously, you know, major concern with the, you know, I, I can imagine too, that would probably a lot of the public would be traffic. I mean, it's a good spot for, you know, for this type of light manufacturing, you know, the mixed juices. I think it'll work, but again, traffic is, will be something to be scrutinized deeply. And I'm thinking as Jim was talking, how would I get there from coming up ninety three north? I mean, ideally you couldn't get off at the target exit because you can't get there. You have to go up and then come back down towards like Main Street in that direction that Jim was talking about from the, from the north. So if you're coming from the south, you'd have to be almost overshoot it on ninety three to come back down. But that's, I mean, the stuff will be, I think, fed it out during the peer reviews and all that. A question I, I do have is, is there access? This is probably for either Tim Tim Williams. Is there access to the parking garage from that other, from the main entrance on, on New Boston Street? Or is the only access to that parking garage from Merrimack?
Oh, no, there, there's, there's access. In fact, this is the entrance to the parking garage right here. The egress point. So vehicles entering can just make this movement out to New Boston. Or as Scott Thornton indicated, if they, they want to go down Merrimack Street, they can exit out through this point. So there is a direct connection. There's, there's nothing that segregates lot one from lot two. And as I said in my presentation, depending on who the end user is, we may need to create a, an access easement across this point as a shared access drive. But we, we can tackle that once it's built and, you know, the hope is maybe there's one end user in here and we don't need that easement, but if an easement needs to be created for access, but this is a shared access drive that does get you right off New Boston, almost to make a couple of turns and you're right into the parking garage.
And you also have the ability to go out to Merrimack side as well.
That's correct. Yep.
All right. Interesting.
And then this was, this is the bridge right here that Walker had indicated connects building two to the parking garage.
Oh, okay. For some reason, I was thinking the, the bridge is going from building one to building two. Okay. Right. Um, like I said, as far as traffic, I think, you know, that's a, it's a major concern that I, you know, will be scrutinized. While we're talking about traffic, you know, you, you mentioned these traps would, the, the traffic studies, Scott mentioned that they were done prior to, you know, there's no COVID adjustments required because they were done in twenty twenty. But how, how do you anticipate the traffic with that New Boston Street Bridge in place? I, I guess, because, you know, Jimmy did mention that you knew what the pattern was like when that bridge was there. I, I don't remember that. But I'm just trying to visualize the traffic flow.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's a, it's a great question. And the, 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 the bridge project as one of their filings included a traffic study. It wasn't in the initial filing that they did, but then they, they did do a traffic study where they estimated future traffic volumes on the bridge during both the morning and the evening peak hours. And we got a copy of that, of that traffic study for that project and worked it into our, to our future conditions. I think they, they, they were looking at a, at a longer build out, but we are a longer horizon year, but, but we, we were able to, we were able to use the traffic volumes that they had, that they had generated and use that as a background condition. And I think we have something, we have something like another thirteen other background projects that are, that are included that, that, you know, for projects that are, you know, going up and down Woburn Street. There's a few projects in Wilmington. There's, there's projects, obviously the, the two residential projects on New Boston Street. There's other projects in that, in that area that have been included in background traffic conditions. So there's, there's really a lot of, a lot of additional, you know, kind of, it's, it's a conservative study from that respect. There's a lot included in it.
Thanks. I'm glad you, you mentioned those future projects. That was on my list. Any you, you're probably not, no one could probably answer this question, but I gotta throw it out there. Any connection to the Anderson Transportation to the, to the rail, the rail station? Is there anything in the works in the pipelines, any discussion at all? I'm not sure. Maybe Tina can answer that or any members of the team here can answer that.
Well, this is Tim from Allen and Major Associates. I can speak about the ground level now. I don't know about any kind of pedestrian bridge that might cross over New Boston and access the MBTA. I think getting rights over the MBTA tracks is, is a daunting task. But the fact that we tied our sidewalk in to the New Boston Street Bridge sidewalk. And if you remember Zero New Boston, we actually had a, a connection from the New Boston Street Bridge down the, the driveway. And we provided a means for people to get from Zero New Boston Site to the MBTA Station, the Anderson Regional Transportation Center. So I, I think this is probably a half a mile walk. If you wanted to go up and over the bridge and down to Zero New Boston and, and walk down that what we used to call the MBTA easement. Back to the, back to the Anderson T. So it's probably a quarter mile, half a mile walk from here if you wanted to take public transportation.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you. All right. So along the, the, well, Madam Chair, if I may, just can continue along with, I had a couple of little questions on the site itself. Tim, maybe you could address this. I don't see, and I didn't do a deep dive. I apologize. Just not time constraints, but given what's anticipated there, I didn't see anything as far as a chemical storage or anything like that, or gases or, or any, anything like that, as far as outside storage of, of that, that type of material.
Um, I, I think that, that might be better suited for a walker to answer.
Yeah, absolutely. So for building two, we do have carried an external chemical storage. You can see kind of that little dot there right in the middle of the site plan. For building one, we are planning on containing any chemicals that'll be used in the pilot plant. I misspoke earlier. It's not a full manufacturing facility. It's like a, you know, research and development type facility. So any of those chemicals will be stored in control areas within the building. And those will all meet the IBC code requirements for this size.
All right. All right. I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other board member that has any questions or comments? Please give me a verbal cue. All right. I don't hear anybody. So what I'd like to do is, this is a public hearing. I would like to open up the meeting to anyone who is attending from the public that has a comment or question. And I would ask the planning board director to give directions to how members of the public can seek to be recognized to speak.
So if you would like to be recognized, we ask that you move your cursor at the bottom of your screen. There's a button called reactions. And if you click on that, you will see a feature called the raise hand. And if you click on that, I'll be able to tell whether you would like to address the board. So I'm going to scroll through our participants here this evening. So I'm going to scroll through our participants here this evening. And I see no one with their hand raised.
All right. So if the board does not have any other questions for the applicant and there is no further comment from the public, I would ask the Planning Board Director if she has a recommendation.
I do. I would recommend that the board continue its discussion and the public hearing to the board's meeting that we're planning to have in July. There is a couple of reasons for suggesting that. We got some comments from, we got comments from a number of departments verbally during the meeting that we posted on June 1st. And several of them have followed up with written comment that raised no particular concerns or issues or need to address changes to the site plan. However, we do have a couple of departments, engineering and public works in particular, who have asked that these peer reviews be done of a number of subjects related to the development, the utilities, the traffic and oh, for goodness sake, I'm missing the third. At any rate, those peer reviews are essential to giving the information to those departments. That's necessary for them to provide you with meaningful and thoughtful and thorough comments. So I would be hopeful that by continuing the hearing to a July meeting, that we would be able to have at least the peer reviews completed. And hopefully, depending on work schedules and timing, perhaps even feedback from the development team after the peer reviews are completed. Excuse me. Thank you. Once the peer reviews are completed, they're typically shared the results with the development team. And then there's an analysis and a review. And then the development team would, you know, work with the peer reviewer and the city forces, hopefully to come up with a agreeable course of action if additional items or issues were arranged. So I'd be hopeful that by the end of July, we would have a lot of that feedback and perhaps be in a position to make a decision. You want to have a final site plan in front of you when you make your decision, I think, because we cite them in our decisions and you want to be specific. So that would be my recommendation.
All right. Is there any discussion, further discussion in light of the Planning Board Director's recommendation? Or I would certainly entertain a motion.
I would interject one thing. I would like to, I would like to, to sort of segue into this. The board had scheduled a meeting in July for July 26th. And I would recommend if we can to continue the public hearing to seven o'clock on that date. However, I want to confirm that we will actually be able to have the vast majority or all members present at that July meeting. We had decided that it would be a virtual meeting, but we are only going to be able to do that if the legislature between now and then authorizes remote meetings beyond July 15th. The current authorization only runs through the 15th of July and on that date it ends. And from then on, at least right now, the board would be required to go back to having in-person meetings. So I want to make sure if we can have a brief discussion among the members, just to make sure that we've got enough members who could participate in person if we need to on July 26th.
All right, I would ask then if a member is available in person on that date? If they could just, you know, how about this? Dave, are you available in person on the 26th if need be?
Yes.
Okay, Bob, are you available on the 26th if need be?
So right now, yes.
In person. All right. Mike, are you available in person on the 26th if need be?
Yes.
Yes. Kevin, same question.
Yes.
Carolyn, same question.
Yes.
All right, so I think we're good. I also would be available in person if need be. We can make that decision at our next meeting. And hopefully that will be enough the time for this particular project's participants. If indeed, we will be having a further discussions at that meeting, given the timing.
It'd be June 28th, the development team. On June 28th was our next meeting. So we'd know the next day and be able to tell you whether you were going to need to travel to Woburn or not.
Right. So if, if that is the case, and if there are no further comments or discussion amongst the board, I would entertain a motion.
All right, I will make a motion to continue the public hearing to our July 26th Planning Board Meeting.
Would that be at 7:00 PM, Bob?
The meeting will be at 7:00 PM.
All right, so a motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, a motion has been made by Bob. It has been seconded by Mike. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask for a roll call vote on the motion, please.
Tim Callahan.
Hi.
Bob Darty.
Hi.
Kevin Donovan.
Hi.
Dave Edmonds.
Hi.
Carolyn Turner.
Hi.
Mike Vintresca.
Hi.
Chair Claudia Bogan.
I, seven in favor, none opposed. That motion carries. We will revisit this matter on July 26th at 7:00 PM. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tina, I think you need to take the screen back over.
I was just getting there.
I think I let a lot of people in.
So it was you, huh?
Did you keep a lot of people out?
Well, they kept popping up when I was doing my presentation, so I just had to keep letting them in. Thanks, guys. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is a public hearing for a proposed zoning amendment to amend the 1985 Woburn zoning ordinance as amended by adding a new section, section 32 entitled Adult Use of Marijuana by amending section two definitions by deleting the current definitions of Marijuana Establishment and Medical Marijuana Treatment Center and adding a new definition of Medical Marijuana Treatment Center, also known as a Registered Marijuana Dispensary, RMD, by deleting in its entirety section 5.8 entitled Marijuana Establishments Forbidden by amending section 5.1 Table of Use Regulations to revise line 33D by replacing Marijuana Establishment with Marijuana Retailer as a special permit use only in the IP2 zoning district and by deleting reference to note 19C and by deleting 19C from the list of notes to 5.1 Table of Use Regulations. Tina?
Yes, ma'am.
Where, where do we start with that?
So let me give a brief overview of where we, where we've been and where we may be going. So you may remember that back in 2017, the city council decided to authorize medical marijuana treatment centers, often called medicinal marijuana or medical marijuana. They changed the zoning to allow medical marijuana treatment centers in the IP2 zoning district, which is in the Commerce Way Atlantic Avenue area. One facility did in fact open, was able to negotiate through the mayor and the city council an agreement and Sanctuary Medicinals runs a medical marijuana treatment center now at 130 Commerce Way. The mayor is now proposing that the city expand the zoning to allow the retail sale of marijuana, often called adult use now is the term that's often used, to allow that in the IP2 zoning district as well. It would be a use allowed only by special permit. And it further, the proposal would limit the maximum number of possible retail facilities in the IP2 district to two. So in a nutshell, that's what the proposal would allow. It would be, as I said, a special permit through the city council and would be subject to their review. And there are a number of findings that are contained in the draft section 32. Findings of the city council would need to make in order to grant a special permit. So planning staff has reviewed it. I think there's at least one reason to do it. One would be frankly, the, it's not the only reason, but one would be the significant financial benefit that the city might realize or would realize from the opening of retail facilities in Woburn. The current law allows local communities to adopt and enact a 3% local tax on the retail, gross retail sales from these facilities. And for the moment, it also allows the negotiating of host community agreements. I think that's what they're called for communities that think that they are going to have an undue impact on traffic, a number of issues, then they can have a host community agreement. Those are still permitted, but they are coming under some scrutiny for what I think the Cannabis Control Commission might readily call overreach. So not relying too much on the benefits of a host community agreement here, but certainly the, the revenue that we would see as a local community could be significant, like certainly over a million dollars. So with a little, I don't have any particular specific facts to give you, but I know that there are 61 communities now in Massachusetts that allow the retail sales. I have looked high and low for reports of negative effects from these facilities. Certainly at the beginning, there were very few retail centers. And so those experienced some significant traffic and parking issues. But now with the number of facilities that have been opened, I think now there's something like 216 retailers as of May can find no issues relative to that even in any of these communities. Just to give you an idea of where the trade is going, I saw a report I read today that since retail sales were allowed in the state, there's been over $3 billion generated in revenue, tax revenue to the state and to local communities. That was as of May of 2022. Just eight months before that, the revenue received was $2 billion. So in eight months, it was over $1 billion in revenue to this state. It's a growing industry. I think most people now recognize as it's been operating that it's a safe and accessible and effectively regulated market. And so the mayor is proposing that the city amend the zoning to take advantage of that like so many other communities have. I'll just rush right to the planning director's recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. But I would recommend to you that you give the city council a positive recommendation and endorse the idea of allowing this use by special permit in the IP2 district.
All right, are there any questions or comments? Oh, Dave, please go ahead.
Just one, I know they've had discussions about these marijuana cafes. Would, would that require separate language? Or would that be grandfathered in with this language if somebody wanted to? Let's say they had one dispensary that opened in that area. And then somebody wanted to open a marijuana cafe. I don't know if that's been approved yet, but there's been a lot of discussion about it. Would that be included in that, in that rule? Or would they have to do something differently and change the law all over again?
No, we, my understanding, David, is that in fact, someone could not by right open up a cafe in a retail center. We're very specific, there are a number of, the reason why they went to quite a bit of work in including definitions was to make sure that we opened it only to the retail sale and nothing more than that. In fact, one of the provisions of section 32 prohibits its consumption of marijuana on the premises.
Thank you, I'm good.
All right, is there another board member that has a question or comment? Carolyn, go right ahead.
I have a question to Tina through the chair. So under this proposed ordinance, it's limited to two retailers, correct?
Correct.
So is that the end number? Or is the way I'm looking at it, is it based on no more than 20% of the number of licenses issued? Is this based on, I think, I don't know if there's a, I'm looking at 32.4. So I guess that paragraph just confuses me. If I could get some clarification. So is it based on two retails as the finite number? Or is it based on 20% of the retail sale of?
No, it's a, it's a finite number, a maximum of two. And I can tell you that it was not derived from a percentage of anything. It was an arbitrary number that, well, a thoughtful but arbitrary number that was chosen when we drafted the ordinance. I had some ability to involve, and the building inspector was also included in the drafting. And so one of the things we were specific about, or the mayor actually asked, was that there be a limit of two. He didn't want five or 10, and he thought there was no need to perhaps have, one was too restrictive. But he wanted to be very specific and it was a number he chose, not a percentage of anything.
Okay, can you look at 32.4 maybe and just clarify that for me? And maybe perhaps it's just an error or I'm just completely reading it wrong. But so 32.4?
Point what? There are a bunch of subsections under it.
Two. So it talks about the number of retailers being no more than 20%.
Right, that's a recitation of the law. But then the second, the second sentence qualifies that and says, we're not going to allow up to 20%. We're only going to allow two.
Okay. But is there a chance that that would go up? Or is that's, it's definitely no more? Because it says as the effective date. So that's what you're saying, it's not going to be any more than two.
Yes, that's my understanding, Carolyn.
Okay.
But
it sort of brings in the statute of relating to alcoholic beverages.
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to reverse myself on that. The conversations that I had in person led me to believe that it was a maximum of two. But I, I'm rereading that particular provision and I would agree with you the way it's written. Right now, the law would limit it to two as 20%. But I mean, I know we have more than 10. 20% of 10 would be two. And I know that we have, I know that we have more than, say, 10 liquor stores in the city. You know what I'm saying? So it's hard to get to, I followed your logic, but then when I looked at the numbers, it doesn't make sense to me.
Right, just the way it reads and.
So one of the things.
Go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry, I, I walked right over you and interrupted you. Please finish your thought.
No, I'm, I'm just thinking that this needs some clarification, whether it's based on a percentage or if it's just a definite no more than two, then we can just perhaps state that.
Well, and that could be, it depends on how the board wants to handle it. But if it's a, an issue that board members share, we could make a, the board could consider making that a recommendation. They could send, you could send a positive report to the city council, but suggest that the language be tweaked if necessary to ensure that no more than two would be authorized in the IP2 district. You could make that a specific recommendation. And if change was required to ensure that, then that would hopefully be what the council would do.
Okay. Okay, I'm all set. Thank you.
All right, is there another member with a question or comment? All right, seeing none, this is a public hearing. Oh, sure, Mike, go right ahead.
I'm just having trouble with this new button. I keep on hitting the wrong thing. Anyway, my question is, have, have we gotten any input from law enforcement on this?
So I have, I did not speak directly with Chief Rufo personally, but I did have a conversation with the mayor who did. And according to the mayor, this police chief, speaking generally about retail sales of marijuana, are, I'm careful how I phrase this. He would much prefer a retail marijuana facility that's regulated and all the other attributes than someone buying it from somebody on a corner. So he actually views it as a positive thing for people that are going to buy, to buy from a facility like this that's regulated as opposed to the traditional market.
Good point. All right, thank you.
All right.
You're welcome.
All right. Anybody else with any questions or comments? All right, this is a public hearing. I would like to open this discussion to any members of the public who would like to be recognized. who would like to be recognized to speak. Tina, if you could give the instructions as to how to be recognized to speak.
I sure will. So at the bottom of your screen, there's a button called Reactions. If you click on that with your cursor, it'll open up and there will be a raise hand function. And if you would click on that, I'll be able to see that you would like to address the board. Madam Chairman, I'm scrolling through our audience, and right now I see one hand raised. And that would be Attorney Mark Salvati identified as James's iPhone.
Good evening, Attorney Mark Salvati. I'm on Jim Giuliano's phone because mine died after that prior presentation. But I'm just here, I represent Sanctuary, who is the sole facility at this point down in the IP zone. They own Sanctuary at 130 Commerce Way. They do intend to convert to add the recreational. I can tell you that our chief of security did talk to the chief of police, who confirmed that there's been no incidents and he has no issue with it. And I would just be here if there are any questions. Obviously, we would have to file for a special permit to convert to medicinal and recreational, but that would be our intent. And I think that the limit of two, it probably will be a limit of two. I don't know exactly why that 20% is in there, but with the 1,000-foot distance between them in that IP-2 zone, you're not going to get more than two anyway. So I just wanted to add that, and if there's any questions specific for my client, I'd be glad to answer. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Attorney Salvati. All right, are there any other members of the public or board members that have any more comments on this question?
I see no hands.
All right, well, we already have heard the planning board director's recommendation. At that point, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. David has a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Second by Bob. I would ask for a roll call vote if there's no further discussion.
Tim Callahan.
Aye.
Bob Doherty.
Aye.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Dave Edmonds.
Aye.
Carolyn Turner.
Aye.
Mike Ventresca.
Aye.
Chair Claudia Bogan.
Aye, that motion carries, seven to nothing. On the substantive question, I would entertain a motion.
A question to the chair. Please. So we have that 32.4.2, whatever it was. Is it, are we going to recommend that they just, it's changed? Or are we going to recommend changing it ourselves and saying, you know, the number of marijuana retailers should be limited no more than two?
Well, Bob, we can certainly have a discussion on that. I personally am fine with the ordinance, the proposed ordinance as written. I mean, I certainly think that if any member has a difficulty with it not being straight up two, that's fine. Myself, given the, you know, dimensions of the zoning district, I don't think that it's inconsistent. So what is the will of the board?
Through the chair, I guess I'm okay with the way it's written. I was just looking for clarification, and I think one of the points that Attorney Salvati made was well taken, given the dimensions of this district that it likely isn't going to exceed two in any event.
All right. I don't hear a stampede to change it, so if someone, if a board member wished to make a motion to recommend adoption of the amendments as proposed, that might carry the day.
So moved.
Motion by Bob, is there a second? Second by Carolyn. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Tim Callahan.
Aye.
Bob Doherty.
Aye.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Dave Edmonds.
Aye.
Carolyn Turner.
Aye.
Mike Ventresca.
Aye.
Chair Claudia Bogan.
Aye, seven in favor, none opposed. That motion carries. All right, moving on to subdivisions. Baker Way subdivision, expiration of construction completion date.
Yes, Madam Chairman and members of the board. The completion date for this project did expire a couple of weeks ago on May 30. It was last before the board in February of this year. At that time, it was noted that the only thing left to do was the ASBIL, but the developer was sort of prevented from completing the ASBIL until he could resolve an issue that arose within a butter, who removed without permission a section of the grass strip that you acquired of the developer and which had been installed. There were a number of ways to address it, and Attorney Salvati, representing Mr. Baker, suggested that he request a modification of the subdivision plan to allow him to eliminate that stretch of grass strip to resolve the matter. And if it was approved, the developer would then be free to complete and finish the ASBIL and close out subdivision. Earlier today, Attorney Salvati brought in a letter of request for modification. We don't have a Mylar sheet of the technical subdivision plan yet, but he did provide us with photographs that clearly show the section that's missing and a copy of a section of the plan that also noted the area where the grass strip would be eliminated. The curbing is still there, but the grass strip is what was taken out. The board has the request, and I would recommend that the board consider accepting the filing that I have as the request that would allow us to schedule a public hearing for the board's July 26 meeting to consider the modification. It turns out, I looked at the plan again this morning with Attorney Salvati. It was literally a six-inch grass strip, typically, I think a three-foot or three-and-a-half-foot grass strip is what we require, three feet, and you would waive it down to six inches. So there's a stretch of six-inch grass strip that we'd be considering eliminating. So my recommendation is twofold, that you allow me to schedule a public hearing for July 26 on a modification request, and that you also grant an extension of the construction completion date from its expiration on May 30 of 2022 to July 25, 2022. That would be the day before the July meeting. And so if everything went south at the hearing, and for some reason you wanted to invoke something about the completion date, you'd be in a position to do that. Hopefully, we will avoid all of that, but the request is to extend the completion date to July 25.
All right, is there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to continue the public hearing to July 26, 2022 at 7 o'clock.
All right, and you don't need a formal motion, Tina, to allow the scheduling based on what we have. That's implied, isn't it?
Well, it is, but I didn't have the Mylar, which is typically what you would see, although they'll certainly work on that and have it to me, they hope, long before the hearing on July 26. So it was that and the continuation of the public construction completion date to July 25.
Beautiful. So there's a motion by Carolyn. Is there a second? Second by Mike. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Tim Callahan.
Aye.
Bob Doherty.
Aye.
Kevin Donovan. Dave Edmonds.
Aye.
Carolyn Turner.
Aye.
Mike Ventresca.
Aye.
Chair Claudia Bogan.
Aye, seven in favor, none opposed. That motion carries. Attorney Salvati, we will see you on July 26, and hopefully we'll know before that whether we're virtual or in person.
Thank you. See you then.
All right, next on the agenda, Planning Board Director update.
So a couple of things. Your next meeting is scheduled for June 28. Right now, we have only one matter slated for discussion, and that is an update and likely a request for a continuance, I think, but certainly an update from the developer of the Highview subdivision. As you know, we've set out a very specific plan, as that is now in the courts, and that's going to take a little while to resolve, but we're due for an update from the developer. So we will be contacting him this week and asking him to provide not only a written update to the board for the record, but also participation in your July 26, I'm sorry, June 28 meeting. The question that I do have is that we had originally, a couple of weeks ago at our last meeting, thought about having the June meeting be an in-person meeting. I guess I will bring up for possible discussion whether or not you want to reconsider that and make it a virtual, because that is the only matter that we have on the agenda at the moment.
All right, what is the will of the board? I have a thumbs up for Dave for virtual.
Virtual.
Virtual's good.
Virtual.
Virtual. All right, wonderful. So I'm hearing virtual for that, and so if we could post that correctly, and then we can certainly at that point make a decision as to July. We may have the decision made for us, in which case it will simply be an in-person meeting, or, you know, we can leave it, we can leave that one lie until our next meeting, I think, unless anybody feels strongly differently. All right, so are there other, I have a couple of other aspects of the Planning Board Director update, Tina. Do you want to keep on going on that?
Sure. So I guess while we're at it, we should also recap now at this point what the July 26 meeting looks like. It will have potentially a public hearing on a Life Sciences overlay district, which we'll talk about in a second. A continued public hearing on the 216 New Boston Street Special Permanent Site Plan Review that we started earlier this evening. There would be the public hearing on Baker Way Definitive Plan Modification Request. And then we will have for discussion Legacy Lane. There was expired construction completion date, and there was virtually no work left now by the developer. What we wanted, we were waiting for DPW to be able to view some improvements to Middle Street to make sure that he was satisfied with the work that had been done. So we'll be talking about that at the July meeting as well. Just to go back briefly to the Life Sciences, that is a potential zoning amendment that we expect may come in later this month. And if it does, then we will need to schedule a hearing for the July 26 meeting.
All right, and we would anticipate by our next meeting that we would have a pretty good idea of whether the proposal that we saw today would be in sort of shape to show up again on the agenda. I mean, if the peer review process is not very far along at the end of the month, next month, we can, yeah, then, well, at our next meeting, in terms of figuring out whether all of the business that we have is best conducted in person or not, will we have a better idea whether the peer reviews and things of this nature that are holding up the first project, the New Boston Street project? You know, will we have a better idea of whether that's going forward, is I guess my question. Sorry.
I can certainly seek, I can certainly seek that out. I think I would need to converse with Jay Corey, who's sort of our point person at the city for hiring a peer reviewer, but I can certainly have him give me with some knowledge from the consultant estimates of time, how long I think it will take, when we expect to get some stuff back. So yes, I will endeavor to get a much better idea of what is likely to be available in July by your next meeting in two weeks.
Great, I think that that would be really helpful to us. All right, so I have approval of minutes, but I don't think the minutes are ready.
They were not, and I apologize.
No worries. All right, are there other business matters that may legally come before the board, not known at the time of posting?
None from staff.
If that's the case, I would entertain a motion. Bob, I would love to hear your motion, please.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, a motion to adjourn by Dave. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Second by Bob. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I would entertain a roll call vote, please.
Tim Callahan.
Aye.
Bob Doherty.
Aye.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Dave Edmonds.
Aye, go Celtics.
Carolyn Turner.
Aye.
Mike Ventresca.
Aye.
Chair Claudia Bogan.
Aye, the meeting stands adjourned, and our next meeting is going to be a virtual meeting on the 28th of June, right?
That's correct, 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM. Thank you all then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice.